To order please, because we've got our technology. And would you all please join in the pleasurable. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you everyone for coming. This is better than going to a movie and watch cheaper. Everybody is here. Now we'll have the swearing in of our new student council member. Joshua, would you please stand? Would you raise your right hand? Do you swear to execute to the best of your abilities the duties of a student school committee member which include the following? To provide continuing input for the school committee deliberations, to strengthen communications between the school committee and district students, and to represent all students and facilitate the discussion of all sides of issues related to students.
I do.
Congratulations. Mom, did you get a good picture? Very good. Shall we formally sing Happy Birthday to Kristen who has chosen to spend her birthday here? Happy Birthday Kristen.
Thank you. So excited to be here celebrating.
Sure you are. Yes. Madam Superintendent, adjustments to the agenda.
Thank you very much. We do have a couple this evening. On page one, we have added the nomination of Michael Briswell for the Winthrop Grade School Physical Education Teacher. On page two, section F3, Mrs. Geyer will talk about the assignment as a school committee member to a homework review policy. And then finally, we have some more communications from the main Labor Relations Board. And then I have added the finance documents under my report. And now those are the adjustments.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Winthrop School Committee meeting of September 4th.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five zero. I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Winthrop School Committee Workshop Meeting of September 18th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion passes five zero. Would the superintendent like to address the labor relations letters?
Thank you very much. In your packet are several documents from the main Labor Relations Board. The first is a letter from Neil, and he writes to inform us that he has received a request for mediation services filed on September 12th. The next documents are from the Labor Board and the MIA requesting support unit mediation. And that's about it.
Any questions for the superintendent? Seeing none, we'll move on. I'll entertain a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Karen Magnussen, Winthrop Grade School Physical Educator effective October 11th.
So moved.
We've really certainly appreciated all of her contributions to our elementary school teachers. We wish her the best in the rest of her moving her professional career over to Veronica, and we thank her again very much. Any other discussion? All in favor? With regret, motion passes five zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve the nomination of Michael Briswell as Winthrop Grade School Physical Educator.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Ladd?
Sure.
Thank you.
Mike is here tonight. Welcome Mike. Mike has a Bachelor of Arts degree in Sports Management from Endicott College, a Master's of Science in Recreation Management Policy from the University of New Hampshire. He's worked at Camp Metrowana, Camp Kennebec Valley YMCA in Augusta, and most recently for the city of Augusta as their recreation coordinator. He comes very highly recommended and very impressive in the interview process. I have to tell you a little quick little story. I had a little kindergarten student today at lunch, and she motioned for me to come over, and she said, "Do you know my daddy?" And I says, "Is his name Mike by any chance?" And she goes, "No." So anyway.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five zero. Do you have your speech already? No, no, no.
I'm ready for you. I'm a former kid director, so.
You always speak extemporaneously about people.
A simple thank you will suffice.
Thank you. Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Motion to accept with regret the resignation of John Bochamp, WHS math teacher effective September 24th.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five zero. Superintendent report please.
Thank you very much Chairman Geyer. There are a number of documents in your packet, and I would appreciate your indulgence as I go through them and the orders that are listed on the agenda. The first is the budget calendar, believe it or not, restarting the plan for school year 2021. And as I have done in the past, I've put together a budget calendar with the administrators, and believe it or not, it's already started. For most of you, the budget development never really does stop. There are certain points in the calendar where there are more activity than others, but it is a cyclical process. And the first one is really yesterday with the official enrollment, which is the tenth one that has to be submitted to the DOE. And as you go through here, you'll see that there are different points of activity. The first is primarily internal preparation, where the administrators will work with their respective faculties, develop counts, submit those counts. To me, they've already done that. Those counts will include things like teachers by position, ed techs by position, other positions that we have in the buildings, ID, maintenance staff, and so on. ELL is English Language Learners, our homeless counts. Then in November, we will check the ADS balances. We do that routinely anyway, but at that point in the year, most of our students have settled in, and we have the year off with any new or transient students. That's particularly important in special ed, because we often get students that we didn't plan for, and they may be in district or out of district, and they may need additional services. So the administrators will also work the superintendent for unexpected budget impacts, facilities tours, student council staffing, and so on. I toured the middle and high schools today to look with the maintenance staff at anticipated budget items for 2021. As you know, we have an AD study coming, and that will inform perhaps the budget, but I'm anticipating that the routine maintenance items will be things like carpeting, tile replacement, and so on. Technology will be part of that as well. And then staff lists will be turned in in November. Budgets are due to be in December. Last year, I started a new process, which is one I've always used in other districts, and that is I meet individually with each administrator. We go over their staffing requests, their budget requests, we talk about their building needs. And then the budget will come to the school committee in January and February. We have two workshops planned, possibly a third. I'm hoping that April, full state, will vote to adopt 2021. It just works out that way. I would like again to be first off the block to present to the town council. I think that worked well for you last year. And then on page two, and some of these are tentative, obviously they're subject to other calendars, budget deliberation by the council in May, public hearing by the council June 1st, tentative vote on the school budget. And then June 9th is a definite. That's the town of Winthrop vote on the school budget. And as we get closer to that date, we'll talk more about the proactive campaign we're going to use this year to help pass the budget. So that's the budget calendar, and happy to entertain any questions? Nope? Going along? All right, the next item is the finance report. We are roughly 73.45% through the school year. We are where we meet in terms of expenditures. I meet with the office staff weekly, and one of the things that we do is we want to make sure that we have in the right place people who are replacing people who have left. And that can get a little bit tricky, because you have transitions between buildings, most commonly ed techs who might have been at the grade school and either at the middle school, or vice versa. We want to make sure that we have compared a budget to the people, we want to make sure that people we are hiring are comparing against is people, the budget that was passed, top funding. So Amanda and I discovered a setting in ADS that had been incorrect for quite some time, so we're now confident that that setting is reading the way it's supposed to read. Any questions on the expenditures at this point? So then we turn to our revenues. Revenues are just starting to come in. As you run your eye down through, if you look at tuition, for example, we don't bill tuition until at least the first quarter is done. Most of our tuition students come from Fayette, and so we typically bill them four times a year. The general purpose aid is where it should be. We watch Medicaid. Medicaid is somewhat unpredictable, because it can come in slowly and then build throughout the year generally, peaking in June. Any questions on revenues?
So just around reading this right at the end, on the revenues, the grand total, we're still expecting 77%?
Yes. Okay? All right, we're rolling along. So enrollment report. Last year, as you know, we commissioned enrollment projections to help the district look forward. This is the first year we can compare those projections against the actuals. So we are down a fair number of students. Roughly 21, 22 kids were also down against the enrollment projections. So the enrollment projections had projected us around 88 for October 1st. We actually came in at 866, so about 22 fewer students. Those students seem to be spread evenly among the grades. It's not like it's all grade four, grade five at the high school. I included in your packet some analysis regarding the superintendent agreements and homeschool count. I've done this last year for you in November. It's a little bit earlier this year. So we, you know, just turn to that, this is page 27 of your packet. We had 24 students request and received superintendent agreements, and I broke out where those students attend. Most of them are at the grade school. And then I went through some of the reasons that people gave for superintendent agreements. 21 students requested to receive superintendent agreements to attend school outside of Winthrop. And then I went through where those students were attending. Very similar reasons were given for leaving the district, daycare. Many students gave the reason that they had grown up in a particular district and they wanted to stay there. And when we can, we accommodate those requests. And then I thought it might be interesting for you to know that 12 students were denied superintendent's agreements, and of that number four were appealed to the SDE, the State Board of Education, and two were overturned either at the commissioners or at the SDE levels. And we have 28 homeschool students in the district. Any questions about some of that data?
This may be planned before the vote in November, but I just wonder what's going to happen with schools with kids who are not immunized, and that's going to be a whole other topic. And I don't know how many that even affects in Winthrop, but.
I have no idea how to answer that. That would be really speculative.
Just something on radar, depending on what happens in November to start with being into.
It's my understanding that because of the people's return request, that's been stayed for right now, and the actual exemptions, the ones that were most controversial, don't go to effect, I guess until 2021. But it is something to be aware, because there are other changes that were part of that field that were not the most controversial ones. Joe?
Question. The total of 28 homeschool students, they're not included however, in the number of students attending Winthrop.
No.
So there's a separate category.
That's right.
So I just wanted to express my concern then to the superintendent with that number of fewer students, we can expect less state aid because of our lower numbers. That's concerning.
You are correct. That is concerning. That's something to watch. Are we ready to roll on? I'm sorry, it's a long way to take tonight. So the next item is our technology update. And if I might, I'd like to introduce Mr. James Corgan. If you wouldn't mind popping up in the same floor, give you a roof. Tell us who you are.
James Corgan with Sierra Technologies. We're a communications and technology company. I don't know how long you want me to go on. We've got locations in Bangor and Winthrop. Is that enough?
I had perfect.
Okay.
Because I'm going to talk a lot more.
Okay.
So in your packet is a memo from me talking just a little bit about how we got to where we are regarding Sierra Communications. So in paragraph one, two weeks before school was scheduled to begin, two of the building computer educational technicians resigned, and shortly thereafter, the network technician powered school also resigned, which left us four vacant positions, because the new position had been added as part of the district budget, with only 1.25 position being filled, and that was in the high school. So we were really helping out there, and we needed to act very quickly. I was very grateful. I think one of the school committee members gave me Mr. Corgan's contact information that proved to be really helpful. So we have met pretty regularly, and we stay in touch by phone almost daily to come up with a plan to meet the needs of Winthrop schools. I met with them, we talked about a performance and monitoring system to monitor our backup devices, centrally manage and monitor our antivirus system, and this just, this stuff is so far over my head that I have to confess, I feel like put a lot on them to help me understand the technical pieces of it. The comprehensive coverage would be seven, six, four, five, and one, or 68, eight, and five for the remainder of the year. And the way we are able to accommodate that is we do have the unfilled positions in technology, and that's the way that we're able to make that work. I also included in your packet, because I needed to do this quickly. The school committee currently has a policy, which is bidding purchasing requirements. It's NPNSBA code DJ. And I referenced the back of it, where the circumstances, and I indulge you while I'm reading here, that the circumstances surrounding our technology needs allow me to form another competitive bid for our P processes. I deem that the quote quality expertise factors or other important considerations outweigh the possible benefit of bidding or requesting proposals. We were in an emergency situation at the beginning of the school year, and we needed to act quickly. They came with a complete menu of options that I think we needed, and I am entering into an agreement with them tomorrow. Part of the policy that I need to let you know tonight, that I plan to do that and execute that agreement. Be happy to answer any questions or Mr. Corgan as well. This isn't necessarily about what Sierra Communications is bringing, but it's more of looking at what the, our technology department and how it was functioning in our three schools. I know that there have been a lot of conversations with our administrators as what was working. This was a good time to reevaluate. But what Sierra is providing to us, is there anything that is not going to be supported or provided in the schools? Is there like, is there a part of our need that isn't being filled? It's a great question. They have established help desks for each of the buildings, as well as the superintendent's office, and technicians on site. I think what is inherent in this arrangement is that staff need to become more independent in their use of technology. And I can speak for myself, so I can't figure out how to turn the printer on. I'm going to have to have to learn, because there's not somebody in my building who can just come, or Richard, who can just come and figure out that I just have to start the printer again, or start my computer over again. People are going to have to have some level of independence. I've talked with the building administrators about this, and we all understand that for the remainder of 1920, we're going to have to evaluate our needs and be prepared to recommend to the school committee, either through the budget process, or certainly at the beginning of July 20, what the technology needs will look like. And I was interested in your choice of words, technology department. I'm not sure we had a technology department, even though one of my, I guess, titles is Director of Technology. I wouldn't say that we had a good coherent department. That's something we need to take a look at.
Mine might just be a comment as well. I tend to agree a little with teachers being a little bit more independent, but I hope there's training on some of these things. We get all new computer, photocopies in our district, and not one of us is trained on them. We have a printer on our own, and that's very frustrating when we walk into a building and boom, there's a new photocopier, and nobody tells you anything about it. So I hope that there's some sort of, if teachers need help, that there's someone, I don't know what the help desk actually does, or who, or what, but if you're walking into a lab with a bunch of kids and you don't know what, you're not, that's not your area of expertise, it can be really frustrating as teachers, and I just, I hope that there's not, I don't know if there is that level of frustration, but that kind of worries me a little.
I think it's an excellent suggestion in terms of training and what people need. What we've discovered, and I'm a dinosaur when it comes to technology, that the folks coming into classrooms right now are way ahead of me in terms of their technologically savviness. We, where's Karen? Karen, was anybody that board at your place? The big?
It's a pro V projection board.
So we now put those in many classrooms, and the reason I use that as an example is because there we do need some technical help in making sure that the software systems are loaded and ready to use. And once they are, then we can certainly provide training for people to use them. Any other questions about technology? Joe?
Do you need a resolution to support a contract with Sierra?
I think the policy gives me the authority to enter into an agreement, and I don't need a resolution. I'm happy to answer any other questions. If, I mean, I deem this to be a pretty significant emergency. So I think I'm okay with that, given the policy that's, oops, sorry, here. Okay, we're going to move on. So let's see, technology, and then I think that is it. Thank you.
Okay, school committee chair report. I just, I just wanted to share with everyone the passing of some really good kind of education in the past about 40 days. Megan Antonucci, which put together the books for our incoming kindergarten folks to welcome them to our community, even though she hit both pillars, the front door there one year. She worked on those, as well as the rest of the committee for many, many years, as well as the passing of Bob Edwards and Costa Smurls, who put together, gave to our students over 70 years of their expertise.
Costa Smurls?
In the last week. The next on the agenda is the evaluation of and development of new school committee goals, and I, I didn't receive any, except for Mrs. Cook, who put them together and sent them to me before she went on her trip. So one is your pleasure, school board. We should have some goals to go through. I have one suggestion that we could very quickly go through the old goals. I think we did okay job with those. And then I can make some suggestions, some suggestions of new goals. We can do it that quickly, or we can delay it. But the new goals might be something like, excuse me, hiring a new superintendent, facilitate the building and facilities summary, and negotiate two contracts that we still have outstanding. And one is your pleasure.
Another suggestion along those lines that Joe had brought up is to look at a pay scale for teachers, because if, in fact, the legislation is going to go through, that the starting salary needs to be $40,000. We're thinking that it might make sense to try to come up with some sort of structure of hire to do a year that needs to be 40, since we're not close to.
Figure out how to pay for.
So that might be a good goal for us to look at, if in fact it goes through.
Any other thoughts? What would you like to do? Would you like to officially call those our goals? Or do you want to put that off? I just figured you all pretty well overwhelmed, and didn't have time to get into it.
I, those were what I had primarily, hiring the superintendent, the building study and budgeting of that, and then what I just added, those are mine, so I'm finding those are commoner goals.
So can we do that right now? Sure. Okay, would you do it? Okay, so I offer then the following goals, and I hope you can get all this calling. So it would be to hire a superintendent, to function the building and facilities summary, to negotiate two contracts, and to create and figure out, that's a bad phrase, figure out how to pay for the new, a new teacher scale in the event that the $40,000 minimum goes through.
It's a planning process.
Plan and evaluate? Is that better term?
I don't know.
Plan and evaluate.
Plan and create.
Plan and create.
Yeah. Because we actually have to get it created. Anybody else want to suggest anything else? Okay, we all in favor? Yep. Delightful, it's done. We, if you recall, the last business meeting that we had, we tabled a homework, the review of a homework policy. I don't have the code for it right here, but it was tabled because our new curriculum coordinator, oh, I'm sorry, our new director of teaching and learning, thank you. Sorry you're not. Dr. Brown thought it would be better if he was given the opportunity to coordinate several policies around, around all that, and so it was tabled for that time. He has started work on that already, and he is starting to put together a very diverse committee. And we're wondering if there's anybody here that's interested in serving on a homework committee. I know that Kristen has shown some interest in that. Is there anyone else that would like to vie for that job? Kristen, would you like to be appointed to that?
No, I don't.
You okay? Megan, you're a fighter for that opportunity?
I think so.
You're okay with being appointed? Okay. Kristen Shumway is appointed to your committee now. Standing committee reports, finance. We haven't moved since last time on the warrants, but we're going to take care of that next week. And policy committee, Mrs. Cook.
We met this evening. You have the minutes of our last meeting in your packet, and we're going to be bringing forward one policy for passing in the first meeting.
Thank you. Negotiations? Shumway?
As Dr. Brown intimated earlier in the meeting, both groups have entered into mediation. And so we've been officially filed that. We have received the information back from the state, and so now it's out of our hands. We'll be notified, moved to KF, and then we'll be notified on the next steps.
I think we've already sent in the check. Administrator, open forum. Who wants to start? Okay. Yes, please.
Just want to update you on LD 1715, an act to reorganize the provision of services for children with disabilities from birth to five years of age. That's one of the bills that was passed, well, it's, I'm sorry, it's carried over till this year, about moving CES services into the public school system. So what the department is doing right now is they're gathering information about the challenges to that, whatever they're going to do in the next few years. I was part of a stakeholders group a couple of weeks ago. They did it by superintendent's, um, region and looking at those challenges and then the information from that is to go to the DOE and, um, uh, going back to the education committee and legislature. So that's one thing that is happening with that. Nothing has been written in stone yet about what they're gonna do. And the other piece is there is a stakeholders group and actually Kim Feeny, who's, um, one of our speech pathologists here, she is on that group and they are needing to gather information also. So there's no specific plan in place right now, but they are moving in that direction and they're doing it a little bit more pragmatically than they did before. So some of the challenges definitely are funding, space, transportation, things like that, so they're looking at all of that. So it's not something that's gonna be happening in the next year, but I would see it being transitioned in gradually like we'd be responsible for the four-year-olds first and then the three-year-olds next, um, between now and probably twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. I think that's what they're looking at. So I thought I'd update you on that. Not hitting us yet, but it is coming our way. The other piece is that, um, because of all of this in the last few years, CDS, uh, is not getting the staff they need to provide the services to pre-K students and birth to five-year-old students. So they're really, um, looking at schools to see if there's any way that we can provide some of those services. So when I spoke to my speech pathologist last spring, um, one had some time and she was used to working with the CDS system, so she took on some pre-K students. And from early spring to the end of the year, we were able to build the state fair eight thousand dollars for those services. She has picked up some kids also this spring, so we are providing some services to the four-year-olds in speech right now.
Thank you. So you think that there's no way we're gonna get a, get a way, get out of doing the?
I, I think the train is going down the tracks. It's, it's starting to gain some speed. I think it is coming our way and I think the more that, um, the closer we're getting to that time, the more they're hoping schools will soon because they just do not have the services. Kids are not being identified, kids are not receiving the services. Kim provided speech services through the summer, um, four or five weeks to catch some of these kids up who went months without services. And we were able to build this summer also for those services, so. And I tell her, if we have the availability, we will, we can do it, but our children come first and, and their needs come first before we provide services. But they're the cutest little things you ever saw because I see them coming from my office.
Thank you. Would we like you to move?
So, a couple of weeks ago, I guess three weeks ago now, we had our fifth grade parent, um, band instrument rental night. And we have about fifty fifth graders that have signed up for band and they're already, uh, playing hot cross buns when they come in in the morning down on the stage. So they actually, they sound pretty good. I think it's gonna be a good band group this year. Uh, yes. For our early release, I wanted to thank Christie Grant and Lauren McHatten. They did an excellent job providing the required, uh, sexual abuse awareness training. And we were also able to sneak in a couple of curriculum, um, committee meetings. Jolene Randall chaired the literacy committee and Matt led the math committee the first time. And Matt has since had a follow-up with the math committee, uh, last night and they've started work towards coming up with some shared understandings for future math curriculum. And today was picture day.
Thank you. Who's up? Who's up, Ms. Chris?
Okay, today was picture day at the middle school too and, um, I decided to tell a little funny story that Jeff just showed me his last two years' school badges and he has the same tie on he has on today. Coincidence?
Predictable.
To say nothing. Last year, Mrs. Clausay's sixth grade class, our present seventh grade, entered two contests, the Pine Hill Poetry Contest. Eleven students have been chosen to be published. She also entered the sixth graders into the young writers contests and forty out of the sixty entered, um, have qualified to be published. Good news right there. Middle school oil tank passed inspection. We have had two Pro V projection boards installed. It was Christmas in September in those two classes. They're, they're a cheaper version of a smart board or a Promethean board, so they're Pro V projection boards. They are fantastic. All students now have laptops in their hands. Some of them may not work, but they have them. I would like to once again give kudos to Amanda Nilton and Katie Allen, who have worked on the weekends and evenings to re-image, repair and clean all of the laptops in the middle school.
Wow, thank you.
Thanks to Mr. Corgan and his team, I now have access to the Winthrop Middle School webpage and I'm trying to unlink all of the links that go to outdated information. The Winthrop Middle School library honored banned book weeks and we got quite a few comments on some of the books that had previously been recommended to be banned across our country from our students. Love on the leash, love on a leash came for the first time last Friday afternoon. We had Two Beautiful Dogs being read to by sixth graders for the last hour of the day. The book fair, uh, Scholastic Book Fair raised over five hundred dollars in free books and because the students reached, um, over a thousand dollar threshold of selling books, um, they have won the prize of watching Dr. Brown and I have a silly street, silly string fight. We will have the silly string play-off. Soon. I think it's gonna be on the eighteenth at eight AM. We've invited the Kennedy Journal. What?
Okay, are we putting waivers down?
No, betting in school, Miss Geyer, you know that. If you got in trouble for the cow's law, bingo. Come on. They're gambling in school, you know that. Friday is our annual polling trip and as always, it's going to rain and be freezing cold. We have many retirees joining us, including Mark Forden, Sally Stone, Jim Baker, Verdel Jones, Tom McGuire and Al Fuller. Always a fun day. Let's go, five, two, one, zero, send a letter to the Winthrop Middle School, congratulating the Winthrop Middle School cafeteria for last year's effort trying to become a healthy calf. That's it. Done.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And remind me next month.
I got you plenty of chances, Steve.
I know. I'm not gonna follow her again. I feel like you're kinda dull and boring. So, um, Mr. Stone is up attending games here today, so I just give a quick report. Our athletic teams are headed into their second month of competitions and all is going very well this fall. Next week is the big week. It's homecoming week at Winthrop High School and everyone is welcome to come chaperone the homecoming dance with me. What time does that stop, Josh?
I have no idea. Sorry.
Seven o'clock. So I'm gonna pass out. I, I talked earlier in the fall about, um, the number of students that we have enrolled on, in online classes. We have students enrolled at KBCC. We have students enrolled at UMA. Um, we have also have students taking classes to Virtual High School and as well as, um, Midler Language Institute. These students have made these choices because, one, um, they had a schedule in their conflict they really wanted a solution to and not have to give up a course they really wanted to take. Some of these students wanted to explore some career options. And others simply saw it as an opportunity, hey, I can get, for example, my English college comp class out of the way now in, as senior English. And certainly would invite anybody sitting here who has had that experience, share, or just like to take a class on like.
Well, for my class, I know there's like, they broke it up into like two different professors. My professor, we usually have like things on Thursdays and Sundays. Like right now I'm in the middle of writing an essay over like an article I read and I really like this format.
And what has impressed me about the students doing the online classes, it's, it's not like Ms. Shaw is there saying, hey, don't forget you got an essay due Friday. I mean, it's posted on Monday and they know the deadline's Friday and it's up to them to follow through it. And I've asked them to share their grades with me and thumbs up. I'm really very impressed with the grades that I've seen from students on, with these online classes. We also have started this year, um, three math classes through the high school math department. There's also our dual enrollment. So students taking stats, college algebra and pre-calculus are receiving high school credits and credits either at KBCC or at UMA, so. Teachers went out and sought those experiences for our students, which is great. All is going well. Thank you.
Thank you. Chef?
Well, um, yesterday we started with, uh, October first, we started with the first menu that, um, I've written for the school. So, um, in September, we were still following my predecessor's menu. Um, we've made a few changes, uh, to the menu. We're working on getting more homemade, um, entrees in, on our lunch menus. Uh, we've been doing some rearranging where we can and the high school is the most modern cafeteria. So we've been able to switch some equipment around and add some equipment. Previously, um, when students walked into the high school cafeteria, the first thing they saw was pizza and what they ate every day was pizza. And we've moved the pizza around a little bit. It's in a, in a pizza oven. And, um, the first thing that they see when they walk in are, um, a cooler with fresh ingredients, fresh fruit, fresh salads and grab and go sandwiches. Um, in the grab and go section, which we started yesterday, a student can grab a to-go container that contains a sandwich and also a fruit or vegetable to make a reimbursable meal. We're trying a variety of different sandwiches to see what the kids like. And, um, in the grade school, we've made a change where the first thing the students see when they walk in is a table full of fresh fruit. And it, this is the age where we want to start them off and it seems like it's going really well where they're, they've learned that they have to grab a piece of fruit before they proceed. So they grab their fruit and their milk and then they come in and get their hot entree. Uh, the middle school is the most difficult challenge because of the facility. Um, we are, you know, making the same kind of changes to the menu as in the other schools, but we can't physically change things around, um, because of, of what we have there. But it seems like we've get, been getting a lot of positive feedback. We, uh, a child was overheard saying in the grade school, oh, look at the pretty tablecloth. So even the kids are noticing that we're covering an old ugly table with a fruity, fruity looking tablecloth. Um, we've had a lot of positive feedback from staff, you know, mentioning that they've noticed that the, the options are fresher and, um, more homemade. Uh, we started purchasing from a local farm, Emery Farms. And I'm going to be attending a conference put on by the state tomorrow and Friday about Farm to School. Um, it'll be offering me tomorrow a half-day with actual vendors that I can purchase from. And Friday is an all-day, um, session on how you get reimbursement for Farm to School and how you can get more fresh foods in your cafeteria. So, I think that's about it. Uh, my high school, um, manager, Diane, reported that, um, since we moved things, that the, the high school kids are eating less pizza, so.
Oh, good, good. Uh, Chef, Dr. Brown has a question for you. Can you answer that? Dr. Brown no longer has a question. Matt?
Uh, well, the two things that I have, since I'm about to do a little presentation, so the two things I had, they've already talked about, for the homework committee and the math committee. So they stole all of them. Yeah, so let me set this up.
Presentation of the state of the Winthrop curriculum by Mr. Shea, so here we go.
So, what I put together is just some of the things that I've been gathering over the last a couple of months that I've been here, uh, talking with teachers, talking with administrators, uh, talking with a few kids, uh, trying to figure out where we, where we are overall. So some of the things that I've heard about, uh, from teachers especially, that there are constraints of time that prevent them from doing some of the cool opportunities they want. So that's, that's like scheduling, uh, some of the amounts of time that they have, whether it's fifty minutes or sixty minutes or whatever it is, it's not enough time to do some of the cool things. Uh, so that's one of the, the questions that teachers have. Uh, there's a lack of cohesion in the curriculum from grade to grade. Uh, there's, there's a great curriculum for first grade, a great one for third grade, a great one for fourth grade, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, but they don't really feel well together that makes sense. Thank you, Tiff. So, in that case, they feel we're creating gaps in learning that happen from grade to grade, which is a pretty typical thing to worry about. Uh, they feel really bad about it. They know it's happening, but they don't really have anyone to help them fix that. Until now, of course, there, there wasn't anybody to be able to do that. One thing that I hear, and this is also very common, there's a lot of talk about pressure to cover things in their grades, in their classes. Just covering things, but not necessarily about learning. I've heard this from all the districts I've ever worked in, a lot of pressure to cover. So when I ask, where does that pressure come from? They're like, well, I, I don't know. So I ask, is it coming from the principals? Is it coming from the kids? Is it coming from the superintendent? They're like, no, no, they're fine. They, they don't tell us that. But that's just a teacher thing. Because I've, that's been in every district that I've ever worked in, there's also a lot of pressure. Teachers feel pressure to do a great job and they want to cover everything they're supposed to, uh, because they want to do well. So, with that pressure that's happening and the lack of a curriculum that, that goes, that flows from grade to grade, from building to building, uh, we're creating those gaps. So we're trying to figure out what to do with it. So I've narrowed this down to like three things that teachers want to see. So they want to see a consistent curriculum that's rigorous and consistent from grade to grade. A lot of common languages, something that I hear quite a bit, uh, that we don't talk the same way from building to building or from grade to grade, sometimes within the grades, uh, because there is no consistency. Uh, they would like a better way to track evidence of learning. This doesn't mean, uh, getting rid of power school and getting something else. That is not what they're talking about at all. They're just talking about ways to try to figure out where kids are so they can better help and support them. Uh, and the third thing is they need a lot of training, uh, and asking for training and begging for training on ways to help them just become better at what they do, which is awesome. Uh, so those are the three things that I was hoping to bring to Winthrop when I got hired and hope, and fortunately, that's exactly what we're looking for. So, so far, so good. So one of my plans are for each one of these, uh, meeting with teachers to help develop that learning progression for all the subject areas. Uh, developing conversations around rigor and taxonomies. It's not just about standards. You have to have some type of rigor, uh, to support those standards. Uh, and working with teachers to develop those cool cross-curricular experiences. Uh, and that gets back to a lot of the time that they need to do, so maybe we can talk about, uh, if you had like your wish, what, how would you organize yourselves and, and how would it look differently so you can provide those things and start those conversations. For the second one, to better track, uh, evidence of learning, uh, this one is honestly gonna be a harder one for me. Uh, so we'll get to some of the, some of the stuff that I'm gonna do a little bit later, but we're gonna have discussions about evidence versus grading. Uh, and what does it mean to have enough evidence? Uh, I'm a big fan of preponderance of evidence versus just averaging things together uh, because you're looking for kids to learn and not just, uh, have a grade necessarily. Uh, so that one's gonna be a tougher one, a longer one, because you have to have some type of foundation beforehand and that would be the progression in A. Uh, for C, for training, uh, we're gonna train on some elements chosen by Winthrop for teacher evaluation. I've been asked to do that and provide some PD. Uh, learning ways to help learners learn. Uh, it's not necessarily about a program, but it's about figuring out how are we gonna meet every learner's need. Uh, our schools have been the same since the eighteen hundreds. We're not really designed to do that, but we know that the world is different now and we need to meet all of our learners' needs, so how are we gonna do that? And one of my goals for this particular one is responding to what teachers are asking for on a timely basis. Uh, one of the ones that came up just last week was about teacher evaluation and training on those elements. Uh, that's not something I had planned on, but it's what they're asking for, so it's my job to fix that and to help support that. So, some PD that we've already started, uh, we did some training on learning menus. Uh, it's a way to provide learners' choice in their learning. It's a way to provide learners' choice in their learning. I'm offering the same session six times this month, three times in the middle school, high school, and three times at the grade school because of the time differences. We started one of those right before this meeting. It went very, very well. I was very happy. And starting next week, there's a letter in your packet tonight about new teacher training because something that happened in my old district, we had a lot of turnover, one particular building one year. So, the principal, instead of having staff meetings all the time, had the new teachers get together on the off weeks and try to figure out what do new teachers need. It's different from just running the building, but they have to know like how to use the photocopyer, how to, when do I go to the bathroom? And all those little things that don't really come up in staff meetings, but it's a place to get together and really talk about how do we do it here in Winthrop? We're starting that next Wednesday. And I've already got some responses that people are actually coming, which is good. So, more PD that I've got planned, but no times yet. Progressions of learning, I'm going to start over the next couple of months. Question formulation technique, which is a way to help your learners engage with the content a little bit more. We do that right after the winter break. Something else, setting up for independence, talks about SOPs and flow charts. That'll start in November and go right through the end of the year. Grading practices in the late spring, in the early spring, excuse me. And then, starting in November, those elements of teacher evaluation. Any questions?
More questions from Mr. Shea? Thank you.
Well, thank you. Yes, sir.
I was going to make a comment first.
Yep.
I'm really pleased with this presentation. I've only been sitting here for a few years. This is the first time I've heard this presentation. And in fact, I've been waiting for it since probably the first year of this setting. But my second thing is the consideration that's really between you and the superintendent. But at least within my circle, the people I talk to, a little bit of surprise about hiring a new director. And part of this was that some superintendent, who I think is the current, in fact, went to a meeting down here at the mill and mentioned some of the different titles that she had. And one of those was that she was the director of curriculum. And of course, the other was that she was also the director of finding the vermin and other pest control types of things too. And so, the question became is, why can't the superintendent do these things? And I tried my best to explain that superintendent has a lot of things to do, but we really need to specialize in this area. And so, my suggestion would be is that you might want to consider writing this type of presentation into some kind of an upgrade that makes us way into the community avatar. So, if people could know little things like you're working with teachers and you're listening to them, you're finding out what they need, you've already found that the lack of cohesion is there. This is a word that most of the people I talk to have no idea what cohesion is. But it's important because it's part of the continuousness of the educational process. So, that's where I come down on this thing, is that thank you for being here and doing the work that you're doing. I think the system is going to, the community's going to benefit from all of this. But if there's a way of getting this more public, I think this would play us all well in offense too. The Shaw and the work she's doing, which is what we want her to do. It's just another way of people learning about what's happened. I think it's great.
Thank you. Mr. Pogus, you were instrumental in wrangling an invitation for a couple of us to talk to the Jager and Rotary. Might you do that again for Mr. Shea?
Oh, yeah, I could do that with you too.
So, if you might get that together?
I've done my best not to join any of those groups.
I think it's nice to have it in the advertiser. I also think that in-person goes a long way.
Good idea. We'll talk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Moving on along, continuing business. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the revisions to policy IGDJB, Interscholastic Co-Curricular and Extracurricular Activities.
I'm going to need to adopt revisions to policy IGDJB, Interscholastic Co-Curricular and Extracurricular Activities with some changes that I can mention.
Sorry.
So, if you find your copy of...
Can I stop you for just an hour to get this out? Is there any public comment out there from anyone that will help us make a determination on this policy? See, you don't go ahead.
Do you have your copy of the policy?
Do I have mine?
Anywhere.
Yes. Yes, we all have mine.
So, in this policy, there are seven small changes. If you can keep count, see if I can come off. On page two, under eligibility requirements and specifications, right before the "Y'all", take out "for" and substitute "in". So, the form must be completed internally for each sport in which the student participates. Page five, in the number two.
Wait, wait, this question. In this policy that we're looking at, the yellow is being eliminated?
No.
No, the strikeouts are being eliminated.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Yep, and the strikeouts, I think, are red, and some are in blue. But, and there's one in yellow.
We're looking at copies that have a lot of colors.
Yep. No, in this one, the yellow is in. So, on number two, non-voluntary referrals, first defense under number one, at the end of that line, it should say active participation in, not of, competitions. On page six, under third defense... I didn't stick anything here. No, okay. Under third defense, B, distribution, sale of alcohol or other drugs, first... Sorry, under B, distribution, sale of alcohol or other drugs, first defense. It now reads, "The administrator will notify the superintendent, period, and then strike and law enforcement." And then, it continues, "The administrator shall suspend the student for 10 days and strike 'up' and put in "may", shorten the word recommendation to recommend, and then cross everything out except expulsion." So, it now reads, "The administrator shall suspend the student for 10 days and may recommend expulsion, period."
So, how come there was law enforcement, just out of curiosity?
It doesn't say "will". Law enforcement certainly can be contacted if the superintendent feel, if the administrator and superintendent feel it's warranted. But we didn't want to necessarily, there might be circumstances in which they don't want to involve law enforcement at that point. So, we discussed this.
I'm sure you did. I'm just kind of wondering why, if drugs and alcohol are illegal for anyone under 21, that would involve all of our high school students and if it, I just, yeah.
And I think in most cases, law enforcement probably will be involved, but we didn't want it to have to be that way.
You know what I'd like to do is get through all of the changes.
And then discuss.
No, no, it's okay, and then we'll have discussion.
Okay. Under second offense, we're making a very similar change. So, it'll say, "The administrator will notify the superintendent, period, strike and law enforcement." And similarly, "The administrator shall suspend the student for 10 days and cross out "a", substitute "may", shorten the word recommendation to recommend, and cross out everything but expulsion. So, again, it reads, "The administrator shall suspend the student for 10 days and may recommend expulsion." It's hard to cross out on the yellow, I discovered. It doesn't want to take pen. On page seven, under health insurance, where the yellow is, the word "risk" has been by mistake left out. It should say, "There is an inherent risk associated with participation in athletic activities." Under the next yellow section, multi-sport athletes, in the beginning of the first sentence, take out the word "with", so it should say, "An athlete may participate in one or more high school sports per season." After the word "season", substitute, include the word "but", insert the word "but". So, "They may participate in one or more school sports per season, but must declare their primary sport and prevent there is a conflict." In the next sentence, cross out, I think the S is meant to be. It's red because it's going to be left out, so just strike that. And in the third line, it says, "After a written sign of support", we changed "sign" to "letter of support from the parents", because we didn't know what a written sign of support was. We thought a letter was clear. And that could be seven. One, two, three, four, five, six, and seven. Okay. Discussion.
Let's go back to Janet's comment because it's a very important comment.
Would you like to hear Janet express it again? So, my question was, why law enforcement is taken out? Since drugs and alcohol are legal for anyone under 21, why wouldn't they be notified? I'm going to defer to superintendent.
So, I'll give you an example of cigarettes. And I'm at the freshman, I'm a freshman at high school, and I bring cigarettes to school and I give them to the cannon. I'm not necessarily going to consider that a law enforcement call at that point.
And if you say, and if you say "will", I'm going to interject, if you say "will", it means every single time, there's no room for.
But why not put "may"?
Contact law enforcement. Because I think we felt that that was implied, that's always an option, right?
But you know, I'm sitting here thinking about it.
I'm going to turn the light on.
I wish I had raised the point was, I hear this a lot, that people are saying, "We know things are going on at the school meeting. We hear that maybe it's being taken care of by the administrators." But isn't it a legal issue for law enforcement to know about it? If you don't include the statement, say, "May contact law enforcement", people just quickly reading this will think that we never do it. We know we do it. But it is, as a superintendent is explaining, is a choice to pick away as to how serious it is that you should be doing this. But I think in terms of the public relations with our community, as well as the people that are affected by this policy, that you probably should put, "May contact law enforcement."
The photon will weigh in on that, Ms. Shawway?
I just want to know, usually when a policy is being changed, it's preempted by something. The law has been changed, and so then we get recommendations based on the law. What preempted the changes to this policy? Because we're making some pretty drastic philosophical changes to some of our, to this policy, like with our infractions and what's going to happen if a student does this. It used to be, you know, you drink alcohol, you do drugs, which all the student athletes are supposed to be signing contracts saying that they understand that they're not to do that. It used to be, you do that and you lose your opportunity to play sports for an entire year. And now, it's like, oh, no, it'll only be for that one season. And I understand you get a second chance, but at what point are we saying, you know what, it's okay? You're just going to get slapped on the hand so that students are then going to, you know what, there's only one day left in the season. I'll do this knowing that I'll still be able to play in my next season. Or if it happens in the off-season, now in between seasons, there's no consequence in according to this policy as to what happens if in between the seasons you are doing something illegal. It just seems like to me we're creating a lot of situations where we don't have definitive responses, and so, it's going to be a case-by-case basis. We've seen that happen in this district before and other things where days off were looked at case-by-case basis and how much trouble that that caused. And I'm very concerned that we're changing a policy where it was very black and white. This is what happened, and now it's becoming a "may", "will", "if". And I agree, certain cases, they're... But if one student does something and then another student does something very similar, and then they're treated differently, that's where the district gets in trouble. And so, this kind of language is making me feel like we're opening ourselves up to those situations.
If I may, I'm going to try to agree with Joel's thoughts about the initiation of the change of this policy, and please, anybody, jump in to help me out. But I think that over the last couple of years through speakers, that they have initiated a different kind of program which says that it's important to keep the athlete close to the team and to the coach, whether, in spite of whether or not they have committed an infraction of the rules. And so, the model has become a little bit more of a rehabilitative model, I think is, might be a good way of expressing the change philosophically. I've had several philosophical discussions with Dr. Brown, and we've talked about the pendulum. And indeed, the pendulum has swung twice since I've had anything to do with athletics, from you're out, not quite for the rest of your life, but you're out for the year, to something a great deal more lenient. And who knows where it's right, but you see it swinging towards the more lenient right now. I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I'll weigh in on that in a little bit. But I'm trying to represent Joel a little bit. And that's what has initiated the review of the policy. So, how may I do?
Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree with that. I thought rehabilitative was the perfect word to choose.
Anybody else that want to weigh in? Well, I'll weigh in then. So, I have been at this for a while. I didn't coach all 39 years, but I was fairly involved with all of it. And I will be voting against this policy. And the reason for that is, there's a couple of things for which, which have given me pause for a great deal of thought. One is the decrease in discipline. And the reason that I was given for that is that we can't help students if we send them away from the team. We can't help them at all. Nothing good particularly is going to necessarily come of that. And I don't necessarily disagree, but I want to speak for the students who work very, very hard to do exactly what is asked of them. And it's not particularly easy to do that in the town of Winthrop. And I want to speak for the parents who have worked very, very hard to help guide their students to maintain that fine line. At the team level, which is not an entitlement at all, I feel as though that's a place for our students that are participating in that to feel comfortable that all people are, all of their colleagues or all of their cohorts are trying to follow all of those rules. I have seen teams disintegrate from the inside out, usually because of a leadership student, athlete, that's involved with drugs. Everybody on the team knows about it, and somewhere down the road, adults do find out about it. It could be the next year. But I've been involved when parents and students have, student athletes have pulled themselves out... But, um, I've been involved when parents and students have, student athletes have pulled themselves out of teams or off of teams because of this feeling that there is an acceptance for, uh, of, of drug use, um, on the team, and it's just all really a big joke. So I, I feel as though that we ought to honor and make room for those students, that, those student athletes who have worked really hard to toe the line. Uh, and I don't feel that the team is necessarily, necessarily a place for, to rehabilitate, um, some of our, of our students that, um, lose their way. I know that sounds pretty hard-hearted, but I feel for the students that work really hard, um, to follow the rules. Another part of the, of the, um, a new part to the, um, policy is to allow students to participate in two sports, um, during the same season. And I'm opposed to that, too. If you have a really, uh, skillful and gifted athlete, I can understand why two coaches of different sports might wanna take advantage of that person. But what that does, in my mind, is take, uh, opportunity away from another student. And I would, instead of one student taking the opportunity to do two things, I'd like to see two students be given the opportunity to come, teach, learn skills and, and be brought along instead of one person taking over two spots. So I also think that it's a great deal to ask of a student to participate in two different sports during the same season. We have a lot of students that have a great deal of difficulty balancing their academics and their athletics as it is. So those, those are my problems with the new, um, policy.
Ms. Shawway?
Um, I also didn't address this before, but the multi-sport athletes addition, um, is, is troublesome to me as well, for similar reasons that you stated, but also, I feel like developmentally, our, um, high school athletes are growing. They are taxing their bodies in a way that, um, with summer sports and only having two weeks off in August, that their bodies aren't healing, there isn't rest, and then asking an athlete to participate in two sports, I just feel like it is putting them, um, at a greater risk. Just for instance, the boys soccer team is riddled with injuries just from their regular season schedule. Nonetheless, taking an athlete and then putting them in another situation. Um, and for instance, if you declared soccer your first sport, and then you're going to cross-country and you're injured in cross-country, it's detrimental to the first sport. Um, so I'm just thinking.
And all those team members.
Absolutely. So, um, so there's that. And then the second is, is that our, our athletes are students first, and trying to negotiate the time that it would take, the fairness of someone who just shows up for games and gets to participate, and another athlete who is showing up to every single practice and then doesn't get to participate because this other person is, I just feel like it creates, um, a level of conflict in our small district that is unnecessary. So I don't support that either.
I, I think to be fair, I, I want you to go in a little bit to the other side. The, the folks that would refute what I had to say, and I've been in this situation as a coach, too, that you, you have some students on your teams for whom the greatest thing in their life is to belong to that team. And, um, to, to, for them to be caught doing something that they're not supposed to do and be removed from the team, uh, takes their whole underpinning out from underneath them and causes them, or allows them, to have a reason to do poorly in school, where that eligibility might have been the only thing that kept them doing what they were supposed to be doing academically. So there is that other side to, to the policy. So the, the, the new part of the policy is that, um, the number of days for an infraction that you're removed from the team has been decreased, it's been abped. But you still have to go to practice, so you're still there as a member of the team and still around the coach or coaches, um, as opposed to being gone for a couple of weeks. You just can't participate in the competitions. Is that a fairly accurate?
I think so.
Other thoughts before we vote? Um, our student, our student, um, members want to weigh in on this?
How you doing, Josh, by the way? How you doing at the first meeting? You doing okay?
Good, yeah.
Kenneth, any thoughts? Mr. Piszowski?
I think we'll change this a little bit sometimes, and, uh, one of my concerns is that, uh, we stay, uh, we can be different, okay? But I think sometimes that if you're the conference, and the conference makes the change and says it's okay for students to do two sports, okay? I don't wanna see the students at Winthrop be penalized when the other conference members, or even the other state schools, or our schools throughout the state, allow that. And certainly, like you, we've seen this happen, uh, on a regular basis as far as I'm concerned, but I've seen some very good examples of where students have been able to handle both situations. And so while I don't disagree with, uh, what Ms. Shawway had just said about the body and growing up and all the rest of it and everything, I think the decision, and we even put it in the policy, really comes down to what do the parents think? And if they say it's okay to go do it, I don't have a problem with that. I do, however, think that this policy is lacking if it does not say something that, um, that we may be able to refer any of these infractions to law enforcement. And I think that's, again, not an assurance that it's going to happen, but at least that option is there, it doesn't.
Opens the door.
And we publicize it. So, uh, if we were to amend and to add the statement, sort of, "May notify law enforcement," then I would find this policy to be acceptable.
Would you like?
And it's second shouldn't be first amendment, second amendment, the same word.
First and second, yes, that, uh, if.
May.
May.
Inform.
Inform law enforcement.
Anybody wanna second that?
I second that.
And that is in both places.
Discussion? All in favor of that amendment? Amendment passes five zero. Any, just, any further discussion about the policy as amended? Okay, here comes the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes three to two. Thank you, folks. I'll entertain a motion to accept for first reading, um, policy KF, Community Use of School Facilities and Grounds. So moved. Second. Let's see. And are, are there any public comments that will inform, help to inform the school board on this policy? Seeing none. Ms. Cook?
Um, there's only one change, and it's not substantive, um, on the, and at the end, page four of the policy. Uh, there's some question marks where it says, "Fees will be charged for the following groups per day." We'd like to strike those question marks, so it doesn't.
Oh, well, could I?
We're wondering.
Okay. Mr. Piszowski?
I find, uh, I have some concern about two elements of this change in policy. One is that it requires that outside groups using our school facilities would have to provide, uh, a blanket insurance policy to cover that particular use of buildings, as well as any injuries that might occur to the individuals involved.
Isn't there that stipulation?
There is that stipulation. Yes. Uh, and, and my, and my second part of it is that there's a fee structure. Now, part of my objection is that that's not the way we used to do it. And I'm not saying that the way we used to do it is the right way, but my concern has always been, I want, uh, the youth of our communities to have opportunities. Many of their opportunities are based upon individual parents who decide that maybe we should have a basketball team at the fifth grade level and set it up. These people are not necessarily in it for the money. If they are, then I wish I had known about it earlier. The point is, is that they happen because it's a grassroots type of thing. It works out well. We do have those that went for the money. And, uh, that to me is, is separate and different. I'm not saying it's bad, but for instance, we used to be able to, and maybe we still can, and maybe our athletic director will be able to swing it that way. The YMCA, the YWUCA, or whatever they call themselves, uh, Winthrop YMCA, Winthrop area YMCA, always had a blanket policy.
They still do.
And, and many of us used that blanket policy for everything that we did.
Sorry, I have something to add.
No, 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 it was, it was very appropriate, and it saved us money, time, and everything. And things worked out that way. And hopefully, that relationship would continue with those grassroots groups that I talk about. But I, I just have this thing of saying, um, we need to get more people involved in looking at it and giving their opinion of whether we should pass this. And that's one reason I'm really glad that we're talking about a first reading here, and there'll be opportunities for people to take in comment further down the road.
Thank you. Ms. Shawway?
Um, so to follow up on that, Joe, it's very specific that our policy says groups outside of Winthrop, nonprofits from outside of Winthrop would pay for, would pay a fee, and then for-profit would, would have a fee as well, but that Winthrop-based groups wouldn't be charged a fee. Um, and so I think that that covers in the sense that people, part of our community that are paying taxes for these facilities, they still do get to use the facilities. With that being said, however, I do know specifically of a time when the weather led to all of the high school games being canceled, but yet a youth group was still allowed to use our fields and destroy them. And so I feel like having some sort of control over the groups, further control, fees, et cetera, that it will allow for, when those sorts of things happen, that we do have money to then take care of things that happen to our facilities. That happened to be an in-house Winthrop group. I don't know if this policy, or if there's a procedure in place, that, that polices when groups can and can't use the high school facilities, but it's frustrating for our high school athletes to be told, "We can't have an event because it will destroy our field," and then outside groups using the fields destroying them, and then they're not in game-ready condition the next time they use them. And that's the sort of push and pull that community members are frustrated with. I get frustrated with, students get frustrated with, that would lead to the necessity, because people don't have as much respect for facilities as they did back in the day when you didn't have to charge anything.
I'm glad you mentioned the outside, but in our discussion with the committee, nobody brought that up that way, 'cause I kept talking about community groups. But my impression was that community groups could, however, still be responsible for paying certain fees, such as for cleanup, or for how do they get into the schools, the alarm systems, you know, wherever it takes. So they may not be free and clear of the whole thing, because we do provide a statement in it that says that, uh, you may have to take in a higher, higher maintenance crew for four hours to come in and, and make sure things are put back together the correct way. That's, again, you, you raised a good point, though, and I think that's why we're gonna be discussing this for a while. Thank you.
Any more?
I don't know if this is the proper place to say this, or whatever, but, um, if they're gonna pay for cleanup, then things will be cleaned up. And so I don't know if there's a way to put in the policy that something will be agreed upon. I'll, I'll use the example of March Madness, when that gym gets used for a weekend. Um, and those bleachers get pretty beat up, things are swept, but they're never, like, washed and cleaned. Now, they looked not so great necessarily when the, the group came in, but what, what is the responsibility and what should be done? And I think that that needs to be somehow agreed upon, maybe per event, or something as to, and again, maybe that's not within a policy, that that needs to be looked at, but if we're gonna charge people to have someone come in and clean up afterwards, what does that cleanup entail? Who's responsible for what? Is the group responsible for taking out the trash, and the cleanup group's only responsible for filling the bins again? You know, what, so something needs to be, I think, in place for that, too, because, um, I don't think it's always getting done to what it should be. And I know if I was paying thirty-five or forty dollars an hour for cleanup, I would wanna know that that's getting cleaned up. And when you come back into the gym the next day, and it, there's, you know, spilt soda still all over the place, what did I pay the thirty-five dollars or an hour cleanup for, you know? So I think that just needs to be somewhere in the, the mesh of the city.
Needs to be spilled out. Do you wanna take that back to, to Ms. Cook?
I don't know what the best thing that we could do. It seems like we have some things to hatch over that aren't clear here, but. If I may.
Yes, please. I think that's really an administrative problem. If the group is paying a fee and the service provided does not meet the standards that were expected, then it's up to my world to figure out why that didn't happen. I don't see that as being written into policy anywhere.
Okay. And that, understand that.
Or if they're using food service facilities, um, there's supposed to have, according to this policy, have a food service employee there. Because I know that that facility has almost been trashed occasionally.
I'm also anxious to see it out and be put on the website for comment. I think, you know, if we bring it back to the committee, that delays that for another month, and we might find some interesting, right, points. Or, you know, if we pass it for first reading tonight, doesn't mean we can't change it.
Right. Any further comments? All in favor of passing, uh, are you voting already?
Yeah.
For first reading?
Okay.
I have to, all in favor. All in favor of passing for first reading policy KF, Community Use of School Facilities and Grounds? Motion passes five zero. New business. Have you all read the, um, oh, well, first of all, I'll entertain a motion to accept for first reading the Winthrop Public Schools' new mission statement as revised. So moved. Second. Discussion? Well, let me ask the public, is there any public comment to inform the school committee on how they should vote for the, on the new mission statement? Seeing none. Yes, yes, I'll move it. New mission statement is, "Winthrop Public Schools' core values develop and foster collaborative partnerships to build relationships and essential skills, empowering every individual to contribute to their communities and live a life of purpose." empowering every individual to contribute to their communities and live a life of purpose. Discussion. I did share this with one other person who said, so what are the core values? Doesn't say it in here. And I was wondering what you people would think about putting in the core values for those of us that can't read them off. Like, we know that there's two I's, two C's, and an I. So, we know that there's respect, compassion, integrity, responsibility, and compassion. Do you think that it might be a good idea for the rest of the community to have, say, Winthrop Public Schools' core values of respect, compassion, integrity, responsibility, compassion, develop and foster da-da-da-da-da? Or just keep it as it is?
It might, in terms of process, this is a first reading, and that should come back as feedback for the school committee to consider. And then, as you're thinking about adopting it, perhaps to include those. My understanding of the work that evening was that was the statement people wanted sent out for its first reading. And as feedback comes back, because you may get other pieces of feedback. You'll have to put that out in the impact, you know, in some form, an impact form for the school committee to consider as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor for first reading, passing the new mission statement? Motion passes four zero one, absent. Motion to approve the MSBA proposed resolution for the leader. Do you think that... Do you think that we could go ahead and talk about CHA before we get into this? I mean, probably asking, do you think it's okay with Joe?
Certainly.
I'd like to go down to number four, because this man will probably speak for less than ten minutes. And he has to go back as well. Okay. As long as that's okay with everyone, we're going to just go new business, which is going to number six, down to number four, and then come back to two. I'll entertain a motion to authorize Superintendent Brown to enter into negotiations with CHA Architecture for an architectural and engineering study for the Winthrop Public Schools. So moved.
I'll be moved.
Has been moved and seconded by Joe, by Janet and Joe. Is there any public comment that would like to help us inform our decision here this evening? Seeing none, Superintendent Brown.
Thank you. There is a memo in your packet, and the first thing I'd like to do is to thank the members of the committee. And that included Ms. Dykett, who was instrumental vote and voice as we went through the process. She devoted three evenings to the committee. And just to kind of back up in the process, last year, as part of the budget adoption, the town council approved a capital improvement project for the Winthrop Public Schools. They put it in their budget. In July, I released requests for qualifications, and we got four RFQs as part of that study. The committee, and the committee included Mr. Lucasio, Mr. Ladd, Ms. Dykett, myself, and Mr. West from the town council. Great committee, met three times in September. The last one was to interview the architectural firms. We had put together a rubric to assess their RFQs, request for qualifications. Took a lot of time to go through those. I'd like, again, publicly thank all the members of that committee, because it was a lot of hours that they put in. We interviewed and scored, and Janet, would you like to add anything to that process? What you regret from the school committee?
I learned a lot. Pretty overwhelming what these companies do. And moving forward, I think it's going to be, just puts us in a really good position to see what our facilities and our grounds, you know, if they can withstand what we're putting them through and what the future's going to look like for them. So I'm looking forward to sort of experiencing the rest of the process.
Thank you.
So if I want to introduce, so Alan, you want to say a few words?
Sure. First of all, we're very excited to be working with you and being selected. And I was going to say, this is what I'm most fond of school board meetings. I think I've been to one. And it's nice to know that somebody else has technology problems besides us. I would highly recommend the help desk, because we have one of those as a company now. And instead of me going and bugging thirteen other people, I can just get on the phone, and somebody can grab my computer, or they can tell me which button to push. So, these things help the old folks.
It works, huh?
But I was going to say, CHA Architecture, you know, we're formerly P E T Architects and located in Portland. We've done a considerable amount of education projects over the years. Probably over sixty studies, two million square feet of new projects, two million square feet of renovations, projects. Every single study is different, depending upon what the community is asking us to do. And we never know where that's going to go. Sometimes we start over here, and it leads to this, and all of a sudden, we're looking at a new site, all of a sudden, we're consolidating. And education is changing all the time. And I think the overarching thing that I love about design for education and doing studies is if we can do something as architects that improves the outcome for educators, staff, and students, we think we've done a pretty darn good job. If we can also provide value for the taxpayers to bring longevity and use, community use to their buildings, that's the second pillar of what we do. I brought a couple of studies here tonight, and I'm more than glad to share those with you, but just a couple of recent projects. We did a study, a master plan for S A D fifty-three. And it started out as a master plan, study, facility study. And then we ended up assisting them in some of the capital improvement application with the state meeting to plan of education. They now have two projects in the top, what I would call, top ten. We also are just in brackets, our production drawings after a master plan that we did for R C twenty-six in Orono, that looked at all of their buildings, that confronted all the same issues that I think we have in terms of the actual physicality of the buildings, the use of the sites. Can they grow into them? Which ones should they shed? Which ones should they take forward? And we have a local referendum, and now we're pursuing that work, which will include some additions. But also, they decided, we're going to let the middle school go. Because, you know, something, middle school was actually the high school, which turned into the elementary school, which was done in nineteen thirty-eight. So it's time. So they decided, after all this work, let's not really invest much more in that, and let's see what we can do. So we're investing in the other parts with those decisions. So, a lot of strategy, a lot of cases, community studies. But I'm certainly very happy to be working with you in your public schools. Just for the record, my name is Kenny Home, Alan Kenny Home. If you look at the name spelled out, it's a little, you might not really get it. But if you think of honeycomb cereal and put a K in the front, you're all set, okay? But we're going to be, you'll probably see more of me and our team in that six months. So I'm here if you have any further questions. Love the answers, so much.
Well, we're glad to be working with you folks as well. Thank you very much. And we look forward to the next several months. Don't feel so you have to stay. It's okay if you want to exit.
The excitement's real.
That's right, because Joe has the floor for the next half hour.
Well, thank you. I forgot it was mine, and I could cut, so.
It's your night to cook. It's going to be a late night.
Yeah, I'm a little quick.
Let's go back to number two under new business. Oh, oh, we do have that motion on the floor, thank you. Is there any additional discussion or conversation here? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to allow Dr. Brown to enter into negotiations? Motion passes five zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. That's coming.
Thank you.
I can give those, I know, or something.
Yes.
But they're there for all of you to see if you want to. They're pretty impressive. Moving forward to it. I'll entertain a motion to approve MSBA proposed resolutions. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Petrasik. Do people get composites?
Yes, yes. They're, they're, we're in that.
Every year, the Main School Boards Association has a delegate assembly. And my great colleagues here have selected that I go back again and try to provide some common sense to that group. I'm thinking that this year's going to be much more vocal, and there's going to be some interest taking place in this. The one that's not on here, and Kristin and I talked about it briefly, but they did add the workshop dealing with the proposal from the governor's office to extend to forty thousand dollars the stamping pay. And it's, if from a personal standpoint, I don't have a problem with doing that. I have the same problem that the communities are going to have. Who's going to pay for it? The catch is, is that right now, the proposal has presented the first year, and it doesn't say specifically, it talks about staple pay to bring people up to forty thousand. But it also says it is paid to bring the entry level up to forty thousand. And that's going to have to be corrected, because almost every school district in the state has anywhere from a couple to many steps that take place between what they're paying right now and forty thousand. And all those people are going to be increased, too, plus those that are above forty thousand.
And we have seven steps that are below.
We have seven. You know, we already, as a state, do not meet even the standard which the legislature has passed and the people have voted for, of fifty-five percent. This is going to be a hum dinner. And certainly, we're going to be in that discussion when we're at the conference, all of us here. But there were a number of resolutions that were presented. The initial thing that I saw was twelve, thirteen of these, and they pared it down.
Thank you.
As a result. And some of these, the first two kind of refer to what we have within our own policy structure. One is staff use of social media, media. And the other one is school board use of social media. And they do present a rationale for all of these things, too, which is always nice. But essentially, it is saying that we need policies that, where people understand that because you are an educator, or because you are on the school board, you are representing them all the time, whether you like it or not. And when you say something, it gets out there in the public, and some of the public will see it as your statement, but more of them may see it as the statement of you as a school board member, or you as a teacher speaking for the school system. And so it's a warning, as much as anything in those first two. I feel that there will be a number of people who will speak up quite clearly, this is a free speech issue. And that is going to be interesting, especially with the incoming president being a leader of this free speech movement. Or at least, Greenlaw, who I'm talking about, has always been involved in political issues. And he comes from a very, very conservative district. And I expect that we will see that this is going to cause some controversy about accepting it. I think we've always had it, for as long as I've been on the board, that we've always had it, and it's something that should be talked about, and has been, at least at the school board level, talked about, that us politicians here, so-called politicians, have to behave ourselves well. I don't know what you want to do. I mean, to me, it's very similar to what we already have, but I'm just saying that the free speech thing will probably be there. I'm not sure it passes through either one of them, not from the School National Association.
So we need to decide as a group, do we want Joe to vote the rationale or vote against that?
I have no problem supporting both of these, since we already have policies that very clearly shape use of social media for our staff and for the school board. So I don't have a problem. I don't think it counters anything that we're already doing. I know that within our district, that there's been discussion of potentially changing one of our social media policies for student use of cell phones in schools, and so on and so forth. So I think that if there was something from MSBA helping guide us as we reshape that, that would be helpful as well. So, I support those two.
Anyone else? All in favor of giving Joe direction to support the rationale for the first one, the staff use in social media? All in favor? Five zero, Joe?
The second one's kind of interesting. It deals with the legislative focus on students. It's a reaffirmation that the MSBA thinks of students first in any legislative area. It also is an admission that it might be that we have not stressed at the legislature enough the value, the priority of this will help students. And of course, I have no problems with that, as far as that's concerned. But I was kind of surprised when I read the resolution the first day about the fact that they felt it necessary to say again that we are pro-student, and the advantages of legislation, even within the wording of the legislation, should contain how it's going to help students. Now, I would like to say a little bit on the sense that this might run into some problems with people who are saying, wait, just a minute. We've got to think of the bigger picture, done, than just students. And in some cases, we have to think about our communities, what we have, what we can do, what we can afford. And the priority really has to be, until we go to full state funding, is that we've got to take and make sure that we think of how it impacts our communities and what people can afford to pay. And I just have this thing where this is the type of resolution that I see spending many hours on. I'm sorry to say that, but some of these resolutions do go. You know, they're planned for three hours, and six hours later, you're still sitting there. Because they've all gone home, because they've gone to the reception, they had the goodies, got the prizes, and I walk in, and no longer there.
But it doesn't mention any kind of reality check at all, does it?
No.
In fact, it does say, should be on the children in our school, and not the adults. And I put in parentheses that that would be not the adults that are paying for it.
Right.
Or teachers. Or teachers, yeah.
Well, in some ways, I think they're using this a little bit to not include the teachers. I personally don't think we can support it as written right now, okay? I think we have to listen to the debate. I think we'd be better to take a neutral position right now in this, see how it flows. But, you know, you're welcome to convince me the other way around.
I just have a comment. So I feel like that this is really broad, and although the intent, I appreciate the intent of it, but if they're talking about standardized testing, like, let's relook at the requirement of that from the lens of the student, then I would be in complete support.
then I would be in complete support of that. But if, you know, because, like, what benefits are we getting? Even if you look at it through the lens of the teachers, what benefit is that providing? But because it's so broad, you then allow for other areas like late start. I mean, we went through that in our community. It benefits students, but for our community, we couldn't afford to do it. So it then, because it's so broad and it's not talking about specific items, then you do need to factor in the community's abilities, you do need to factor in those other stakeholder groups. So I agree, Joe, that as written, that I wouldn't support it, I wouldn't be in support of that.
Anyone else? I think this needs a bit of a reality check. What's the consensus of the board for the third, the legislative focus on students?
To not support it.
To not support it as written.
Correct.
You okay with that, Joe?
I'm okay with that.
Can I just whip back and make sure that, you know, we, I checked the, your consensus for the first one. How about the second one, that's social media, uh, school board use of social media? You're okay with supporting the rationale of that? Okay, so then we did the third one and the fourth one, then Joe, board-teacher relations.
I think we're all supportive of the teacher relations and everything. I was, I was glad to see that the Main School Boards Association has said that they want to help train boards. And I like that part. Then they said in interest-based bargaining. And I'm going, I wish you just had skipped the union relationship here because I like the collaborative relationships between the school boards and our teaching staff, you know, and others, that, that's good. That, that bothers me a little bit, just that little phrase in there because I, I do think we all need this type of training. How do we work with other people? Not just this, the teachers, but the communities and stuff like that. That could be helpful. So that's where I'm at at this point.
So does your opinion support the published rationale?
I don't support the emphasis they have on this being preparation for bargaining. And in that sense, I'm using it as a preparation for bargaining with the union. If they had said bargaining with community teachers, you know, stuff like that, if they had broadened it a little bit, I perhaps could have agreed to it, but the question. The other thing too is that this gets into this question of educational policy. You know, you notice the sentence that says, should sir have noticed that more needs to be done to engage teachers in the meet and consult process around educational policy? You know, the union has sought through various means including legislation to take over more educational policy. So I don't know why they're doing this, to tell you the truth. I mean, main school management's not going to change its decision on the fact that educational policy belongs with the, the elected school committees.
If I could weigh in, I think that this goes along with the same rationale as the last one, that we need to take our community's needs into consideration. And although some of what was brought forth to the legislation this past session, a lot of it, if it was enacted, would have crippled us financially. And so I think that if you're a large school system, maybe it would affect you differently, but we're not. We're a very small municipal school, school district with school enrollment that ebbs and flows and that we need to make adjustments according to those real-time needs. And, and so I, if that is what the intent of this collaboration is, then I wouldn't be in support of it. I'm in support, full support of collaboration, full support of getting feedback and input from our administrators and from our teachers about what's happening in our schools, absolutely. But if it's, it's for being able to negotiate on ed policy and have that be part of the contract then, then that is, I would not be in support of it.
I, I agree with that. Anybody else? How shall we direct, Joe?
Well, again, it's the same thing. I mean, I, I could go in neutral, just let's see what, decide what to do. Or you could take a position to say, the way it's written, we're concerned about it and we're not going to support it.
But we're concerned about adding ed policy to negotiations.
And of course, they wrote it and added it.
Yeah.
So I would say to not support.
Right. The way it's written, but you know why.
Yeah.
You okay with that? CTE funding?
This, uh, one thing I would say, the last resolution was submitted by Zed seventy-five, our school board. Every year, they make a recommendation saying, or they, they put out information saying, you can support, you can submit a resolution. And I was glad they accepted this stuff because I don't, I think we're all in favor of, of the career and technical training, but they haven't just, you know, addressed the problem. The problem is money. And again, my thing is that if the money's from the state, I'm all in favor of it. If the money is from the community, you know, I don't really want to go much higher than what we've got because we can't afford it. But I do believe that career and technical training is, is extremely important to the state. So in many ways, I'd support this.
And, and I know that it says the state will fund it, but we all know what that might come down to, but.
But right now, they just take it out of our general fund.
Yeah, exactly. They find a way to stop if they fund it.
Right. Everybody agree with Joe?
Okay.
Yep. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Still supporting that one?
Yes.
Number three, motion to accept the donation of one thousand five hundred dollars from the Federal Credit Union to support the life skills program at one through high school. So moved.
Second.
This, well, any public comment? Discussion? Any comments from the school committee?
That's awesome.
I, I assume you thank them. Thank you so much. That's really. All in favor? Motion passes five zero. Put this page over, does it say agenda, I mean, adj, agenda, no. Motion to approve the recommended change to the class of twenty twenty graduation date. So moved.
Second.
Is there any, uh, public comment to inform the school committee?
What is the date?
Pardon me?
What is the date?
June four. Would be Sunday.
Sunday.
May fifth.
Like it.
Like it.
Okay.
Can, um, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, moving forward, if this is going to be, I don't know, does it, do you set the date?
Usually consultation with the building principal, except in the calendar.
Okay, then just maybe if we're going to, if this seems to sort of be the trend and the rationale makes sense, maybe we want to just look at from now on, doing it on a Sunday coming forward.
It was traditionally on Sunday and last year was moved to accommodate Principal Creach's personal graduation. So this, this, and there was some discussion at that time about whether to keep it on Sunday and that's where it ended up in the calendar, but the kids would like to move it back.
Oh, they want to move it back to Saturday?
Back to Sunday.
It was Saturday, just that one year, moved back to Sunday. The other thing usually too was when Miranda Cook had their graduation, because we do have some staff members that have commitments in both directions, so. I don't know if Miranda Cook has theirs on Sat, Saturday, but traditionally it happens, you have to send it. Okay. Um, I'm sorry, Michelle.
Sorry, but can we just notify project graduation errands?
I was just going to say that, they already called, they'll call me tomorrow at seven thirty.
Because if someone asks you this separate and I said I would verify what the date was because they're already trying to book.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five zero. School committee, open forum. Shall I start with you, Pen Up? Okay.
As Mr. Campbell always said, homecoming week starts October seventh, which is next Monday. Students out with their high school are very excited to participate in the dress-up days, parade and dance. And also SAT rate takes our two places Saturday afternoon.
Good luck to everyone.
Good luck to you. It's a fun time, isn't it, Miranda?
Thanks to community members who came for our workshop meeting, for our mission statement, and, and our staff as well. But it just, it was a great night and a lot of collaboration and we cut out early, so we worked well together. Uh, good luck to sports teams finishing up their seasons, um, with NBC's coming up. And, um, also thank you, I know we have homecoming coming up, and I'm just wondering if there's a way to thank the community and local businesses. This is about sort of coming home. We have so many businesses that help our kids in our schools and, um, it just might be, I don't know, a thank you of some sorts. And I can certainly put something on Facebook too, but, um, I, I just, we can't thank our community enough and I don't feel that we necessarily do. I know individual teams doing things like that, but it just might be nice to have something come from the school committee.
Do you want to try and craft a quick little letter? Because you've been on top of that for years now.
Sure. I can do that.
I mean, you had a mind-boggling list a few years back.
Okay, I can do that.
Something short and sweet.
Yep. And I'm going to Dr. Brown or is that, yeah, no, I don't mind.
Thank you. Did you have anything else?
Nope, that's it.
And, and along with the community members also, I wanted to add to Dana's, Chef Aaron's presentation of that whole facility to accommodate, um, our mission statement stuff. Along with thank you to all the administrators and the staff.
It was nice. It was nice.
It was nice, it was very nice.
Okay, I just want to bring this up. I may have brought it up already, but I didn't, I don't remember, but some of us are still using our phones while we're traveling. I haven't had Bluetooth, so I don't have to use my, the site. I have a pretty good directory, I still have the press. The real problem is people are not changing from requiring me to press one, two, three, four, five, six, including the ones of school system. And, yeah, I know better. But I'm thinking that there's got to be a telephone system out there that's going to do maybe a voice change type of thing. We recognize it if I said one. I know I've talked to some people who are now doing this, including Walgreens up here for a prescription or something, and she spends six hours going through it. But the point is, you can do it verbally. And so I'm just putting a, you know, a thing.
I think that's a good idea, Joe, because I've almost driven off the road trying to push one. I could do it when I had the hand held over at State today. Hey, Sherry, push one.
The worst thing is if you've got the phone in the back in a bag or something, and the ritual, that. Anyway, I just want to bring that up because that's a future planning, we are going that way. Washington, I can't use my phone, so. I wanted to bring that up. Couple of things. I, I really, it seems like this year, for some reason, we've had better news coverage of what's going on at the school, the articles put in about the new staff, ballgame coverage, community happenings. And I think all of that is great. I certainly saw when I attended the Lisbon football game last Saturday, just a overwhelming support of, of the, the parents and as well as fellow community members that made their way down there and everything. It was a lot of fun. But I also noticed, and I noticed it out here at the last football game, we need to do something to encourage our senior citizens to come out for these games. And it's not just football, it could be field hockey, it could be the soccer games. Because I really feel they're the ones that don't feel part of things and they also are the ones that vote against us every time we go in. And, and I don't know, you know, they're doing it through the information they get. You know, maybe they just need more information, but we should think about how we encourage our senior citizens to do more with the school, those activities. I think we still should have, I know we have a, don't we have a grandparents' luncheon in the grade school?
Yeah.
We, we have a recent.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I, you used to have one that was great. I used to buy the parents for hot dogs, those lousy hot dogs, you know. But anyway, I love hot dogs, though. But I'm just saying, you know, I think we are planning, we ought to look at this and see what more little things we might be able to do. And, uh, I guess that's, that's about it, that's good.
Can we have a grandparents' basketball game? With the grandparents?
Senior citizens' basketball?
Oh, yeah, have to get the ambulance or.
No, not that they play, but that they get in for free to play.
Well, you know, I, that's.
I thought you meant play too, yeah.
I think we should like.
So you have more than one ambulance.
And I also, and believe it or not, I've had people tell me, they've got to start earlier.
Before they go to bed?
Well, it's kind of like, yeah, you know, seven o'clock is late for them. Maybe we need to start thinking about it. Joel was here, I was going to mention it to him. Can we schedule early some of these games?
Not, yeah, that's a whole nightmare with the MPA and all that, scheduling.
I, I don't.
No, I like two years out though, scheduling, so that's a, and then, yeah, that's a getting out of school.
I think it'll too.
Already early.
You know, I have to go to bed by eight thirty.
Better hurry there, Sherry, guy. Got to wrap this up, I'm not talking.
Lauren knows, I don't go to bed at eight thirty. My dogs don't go out till two thirty. They took your lights, they see your lights go on.
Lights. Okay, I find it.
It's the deer, the deer come over, eat her flowers, okay? That turns on the light, my dogs get up.
Okay, we're going to move on now. Is that your last item, Joe?
Yeah.
I think it would be nice because we do need to include them. That way you could do that. Mrs. Cook?
I'm just excited about all the opportunities to come and, you know, technical study and things like that. And partly overwhelmed, but, um, yeah. Michelle. One thing I didn't think of, when we, did, did we have originally on our calendar that graduation was on Saturday?
Yes.
Because I know last year that when we moved it halfway through the year, that when there was a conflict with games, that the MPA said, sorry, it was on your calendar. So now that we're doing the switch again with it on the calendar, I don't know if we notified the MPA much earlier, if they would be able to take that into consideration or not. But anyways, that was a problem last year, so I didn't ask that question before. Another thing that I've been thinking about with.
I told you.
Yeah, yeah.
Would you like to direct anyone to, to do that?
Well, would, I would assume it would be our athletic director, but since he's not here, then perhaps.
Maybe you could ask your superintendent.
You could. Wait him on that and make sure.
Okay. Okay, go ahead, Michelle.
And then with the homecoming coming up, um, we have a lot of exciting events, one of which is our parade. And we discussed years ago guidelines for the parade. And I just want to make sure that those guidelines are going to be followed. We talked about that street being closed, so that would mean that the police needs to be notified. Have the drivers and, I guess, just the chain of command, have the drivers that are driving floats been told that they cannot exceed ten miles, fifteen miles an hour as they're pulling children on the back of floats?
Would you like to direct anybody to check?
Again, I believe that would be our, our athletic director, so Dr. Brown, if you would follow up with him and make sure that those three guidelines are being followed, that'd be fantastic.
And where are those?
Where are those written down somewhere?
If nowhere else, they would be in our meeting minutes from two years ago, I think. it was. But that should be something that we have, homecoming policy procedures, not necessarily policy, but homecoming procedures, and then that should, just to get the safety guard.
Or even parade in general, if you want to go that route.
Yeah.
They need to wait till the sheriff shows up to direct them. They put me in the middle of the parade when I was coming home. That was bad enough, but it separated the ones behind you. I think I stopped along the way and watched it with your mother. And all of a sudden, we see these people coming down and they were just speeding the ketchup, okay?
Yeah.
Hold on.
Yeah, I think it's, if we wanted to be a community event where the community comes out and cheers them on and the kids are there, then it needs to be a safe place for the kids to be. I know that a lot of the athletes are, the teams are planning on having candy and distributing the candy, but we can't do that safely if the road isn't closed down for that. It means literally 15 minutes. Diver traffic, so signs need to go up now saying that on Thursday evening from this amount of time, that traffic, you know, on Main Street, this section of Main Street will be closed, those sorts of things.
Did he do that?
I know that they happened in the past. I know that when Ryan was the town manager slash police chief, that he consulted with us on that. And I don't know if it needs to be said to the teams, "Don't throw candy while you're on one thirty-three, wait until you get onto Main Street." I don't know, but I just feel like there's, we haven't had an accident. We've been very fortunate that we haven't had an accident, but it makes me nervous every year as it approaches. That's it.
Mr. Wilson?
Well, first of all, thank you for welcoming me to the board. Thank you, Ms. Geyer, for, I guess, mentoring me for the first few days and emailing back in, of course, in the sousa, thank you. I'm looking forward to coming more, to coming to more of the meetings, so that'll be fun, hopefully.
You have fun tonight.
Yeah. Also, I don't, maybe I should have talked about this when it was up, but, and I didn't come to the last board meeting again, sorry. That when we were up on technology and laptops, I know that Ms. Malkassel, our teacher, she also worked really hard to get out of her laptops so we could have them in time, and I know we were a little behind schedule, but I don't want to leave her out and like just say, I don't know, just say thank you to her.
Good point.
However it gets out, but like, I know she worked really hard, especially for online classes. Lastly, I just, I hope to bring forward some ideas on, and I talked to Kenna a little bit about this, on how we can involve more student, more of the student body into decisions. Not that grade schoolers would have much to say on whatever, some of these big topics that we talked about, but if something does come, now having the principals here, maybe us contacting you guys on, maybe like getting some of the, I don't know, upperclassmen, I guess, from each school to have some input and just some easy questions if I do see something, if we do see something pop up on the agenda and maybe contacting them to get more input on the lower grades so they get a voice otherwise. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Joe. Yes?
On the eleventh, which is the homecoming field hockey game, the class of eighty-nine state team is coming, a lot of the members are coming back and they're going to do a presentation for them, and I believe that might also be happening in football, or did that already happen? There was a bunch of alumni at a football game that were recognized. I don't know if they're doing that for older alumni members, but Joel had shared that as well, so that's just nice to see as well, is the alumni coming back.
Okay, all in favor of the motion to go into executive session, please?
So moved. That's what I, that's what I have to read. I move to enter into executive session regarding negotiations for someone to one M R S A four zero five six D.
All in favor? Motion passes five zero. Thank you, everybody.